Call City Council Meeting for October 2nd to order please. If you'll please stand, we'll have the pledge of allegiance given by Councilman Forrest Fleming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this public which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to call Reverend Dana McKim from the First United Methodist Church to please lead us in an invocation.
It begins with my apologies. It's good to come clean, Mr. Mayor.
I understand.
I missed my appointment with you all two months ago, and as I sat eating my spaghetti, I realized it was not a pastoral emergency except for my stomach. My apologies, sir.
You are forgiven.
I thank you all for extending me grace and a second opportunity, and I came here tonight intending to pray for us, but I would like to begin with a moment of silence that we might pray for those who lead the people in Nevada. Mighty and gracious God, we pray for all of those who are strapped with the burden of leadership, for those of Las Vegas, for those of Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands, for those of our own federal government who are tasked with the responsibility of keeping their people safe. We know that hearts break even among the highest of public officials when people of a community suffer. We pray your hand of grace be upon those who must lead during such difficult times as this, and we are so thankful and so grateful for things that we so often take for granted, such as those who watch over and look over us in this community, and we pray your hand of grace upon them. We thank you for the high privilege and honor that it is to serve, not just in this capacity, but to serve our fellow human beings. Unless we complain too much, oh God, remind us that we are the ambassadors of your peace and your grace and your hope. We are the ones, all of us, each of us, called in your way to bring about hope and justice, reconciliation, and transformation in broken communities and among broken people. We pray your hand of protection upon this body that leads us, upon those of our city who have that responsibility, and for all who are citizens of Morganton and Burke County, and wherever you can use us, oh God, as ambassadors of such peace and grace. Give us strong and willing hearts and the resolve to fulfill that call. In the name of all that was and is and has yet to come, let God's people say amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend McKim, thank you so much. I'd like to introduce the council to my far right, Forrest Fleming, City Council. Louie Vinaire, Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. To my left, Sally Sandy, City Manager. Sidney Simmons, City Council. John Cantrell, Mayor Pro Tem. Kelly Russell, our Recording Secretary, and Becky Brinkley, interpreting for the deaf community. We have a service pin that we'd like to present tonight. We recognize our long-term employees for service at a City Council meeting. Usually we recognize those with 20, 25, and 30 years, and tonight we'd like to recognize Stevie Clark, Recreation Maintenance Supervisor, for 20 years. I'll ask Councilman Simmons if he'll make that presentation, if Mr. Clark could come forward and meet you. Mr. Simmons, get the microphone, please.
We really appreciate you. I have received more compliments about the Greenway since you took over down there than I ever have.
Well, thank you so much.
You're doing a super job.
Thank you. It's a lot of hard work, but I really enjoy it. Thank you very much.
You can have the mic or anything you want to say.
I tell you, I've really enjoyed my time here with the city. It really makes you feel good when a kid comes up to you and says, "Steve, you helped me get a tennis scholarship." You know, it really feels good to get a hug and get thanked for that, and it's been hard work, but I love what I do. Thank you very much.
Steve, thanks so much. We also have another service award for Lette McIntosh, Encompass, who's a customer service specialist for 25 years. She was unable to be with us, but that award will be given a little bit later. We have a long list of public issues to talk about. First of all is going to be the presentation of the Morganton Human Relations Commission for 2017 Citizen of the Year. I'd like to call on Cecilia Sarat to come forward, please. She is our HRC Chairperson, and Connie Davis, if she'll come forward, please.
Good evening. It's this time of the year when the Human Relation Commission for the City of Morganton gets an opportunity to award one of its own for an outstanding volunteer service. This award is given to adults, high school students, and middle school students for services ranging from providing a meal or perhaps taking someone to a doctor's visit. This year, our recipient is from our adult category, and at this time, I'll ask Dr. David Burlison to approach the podium and say a few kind words about this year's recipient.
Thank you. So often you're in meetings and you hear people recognized and honored, and folks in the audience say, "How in the world did they get that recognition?" No one, if you understand the life's work of Suzanne Balada, would ever say that. I've known Suzanne in her past life and her present life. We worked together for over 30 years in the Burke County Schools, and for 33 years, she's taught at North Liberty School, and she worked with children every day who definitely needed her help. She not only taught them, she loved them, she cared about them, she was nurse to them, she was mom to them. But in everything that she did, she did it out of a heart of concern and compassion. She did many things at North Liberty. She was a member of the NCAE. She worked with the Special Olympics in the county. She took children to state events and international events. She was a Boy Scout leader, a Girl Scout leader, a DARE leader, and many times she was named Teacher of the Year at the school. Now, that sounds like a busy life, but I truly think she's busier now than she was when she was teaching. I see her almost every day at Burke United Christian Ministry. She's in our pantry one day a week, she cooks once a month, she's in the shepherd's kitchen at her church once a week, and she's at Open Heart Bakery one or two days a week. And I think if you add that together, that's about six days a week. I'm not sure how she gets it all done. She's also part of her women's ministry at church, she's part of the Guatemalan Bakery, she works with the State Employees Association and works on their newsletter, their college fund, collecting many items for their fundraiser, and cooking turkeys at Thanksgiving for Burke United Christian Ministry. She's been involved in the homeless task force, and she's also part of the group Food Not Bombs, which is a good thing. I can tell you that without her leadership and her desire to help others, our ministry couldn't make it. When we're down on food, Suzanne's the first one to put on Facebook or ask someone to help. She's the first one to advocate for people in need, she's the first one to support someone who can't help themselves. And not only does she help herself, she's passed it along to her children. Just to let you know, I came in this morning and there was two full buggies of food, and I thought it was part of the food drive Friday night, but that was still on the truck. I said, "Where did this come from?" Said, "Well, Suzanne and her daughters brought it over." And that shows you the kind of life she's lived, that her children have seen in her the example to do unto others as you'd have others do unto you. And Suzanne, we're proud of you, we're thankful for you, and we're appreciative of all you do, not just for Burke United Christian Ministries, but the many clients that we serve. You all got this one right.
Thank you, David.
Now we'll have our nominator, Ms. Connie.
I just want to say it's been a blessing to have Suzanne Balada in my family's life for the last 15 years. Suzanne was a mentor for my son Derek when he was working at North Liberty. Through this relationship is how I met Suzanne. I have always seen her show kindness to those in need. She has always shown loving kindness to my children and my grandchildren. During my battle with cancer, I had a period of time when I was required to eat really nutritional food, and Suzanne cooked nutritional meals for my family seven days a week over a year. Would she accept anything for that? No. From the time that I've known her, she has always given of herself where the Lord has led her. I have been so blessed to be her friend for the past 15 years, and without further ado, please join me in congratulating the 2017 Citizen of the Year, Suzanne Balada, if you would come forward.
We're going to let you say something.
Anyone that knows me knows I'm not a speaker. I am... I really don't know what to say except thank you. I appreciate the kind words from Connie and from Mr. Burlison. When I retired from teaching, I thought that my life was through. I thought that that's what I had been called to do, and so the Lord has just led me to many different places and opportunities and people to serve, and I just... I wait every morning to hear from Him where He wants me that day, and I just want to say thank you again. I'm very grateful to be able to volunteer and be able to serve in this community.
Thank you.
Suzanne, thank you for your service. Next on our agenda is a resolution and proclamation for Public Power Week, and I will read. Whereas public power is a crucial component in the City of Morganton, contributing to the overall health of communities by providing reliable electricity, excellent local service, and prompt restoration, and whereas Morganton is one of North Carolina's more than 70 public power communities and among more than 2,000 across the country, and whereas many of North Carolina's public power cities and towns, including Morganton, have been electric providers for more than 100 years, and whereas public power meets the electric needs of 40 million Americans, almost 15% of electricity consumers, and whereas North Carolina's public power utilities are valuable community assets that contribute to the well-being of the community by providing economic development opportunities, and whereas North Carolina's public power utilities are dependable institutions that provide excellent service and a commitment to community, with Morganton's reliability rating consistently exceeding 99%, now therefore be it resolved that the week of October 1st through the 7th, 2017, is Public Power Week, a week to promote and celebrate the City of Morganton as a public power community, and be it further resolved that the City of Morganton will soon... will join with all public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power adopted this second day of October 2017. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, Clerk. I have a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ask Councilman John Cantrell to give that resolution to the main electrical man in Morganton.
Brooks, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you for your crew and all they've done.
Thank you very much. I'm honored to receive this, and it's not for me, though, it's for those guys back there. Recently, after Hurricane Irma come through, we dispatched a crew up to Western Carolina University to help out up there with some outages. Then we sent some crews down to First Albany, Georgia, for a day's work restoring power, then on down to Bartow, Florida, where they worked six days, 16, 18-hour days, helping the citizens get power back on there. And this resolution honoring and recognizing us is not for the equipment, it's not for the trucks, it's for the guys who drove the trucks, it's for the guys who used the equipment to get those folks' power back on. I'd like to recognize Randy Chester, Bart Chapman, Houston King, Philip Campbell, Medford Ladford, Gary Benfield, Ethan Burns, and some of the guys that went down to Florida. You see the pictures here of some of the damages they encountered on the way down there, and though it's an isolated picture, the whole town was like that. Everywhere you went, poles were down, trees were down, homes were damaged, and the people were desperate. But also like to recognize the people of Florida and Bartow. They came out, they brought food, they brought drinks, they brought help, they washed clothes, helped the crews get the power back on, and this is for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks. Next is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the City of Morganton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas nearly 3,000 people die each year as a result of home fires, and whereas unattended cooking appliances are the leading cause of home structure fires and associated injuries, and the third leading cause of home fire deaths, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association recommends at least one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside all sleeping areas, and in all bedrooms, and whereas automatic fire sprinkler systems cut the risk of dying in a home fire by about 80%. And whereas the City of Morganton Public Safety Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and proper education, and whereas the City of Morganton residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Every second counts, plan two ways out," effectively serves to remind us that all the simple actions we can take to keep our homes and families safe from fire are year-round. Now therefore, our Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October as Fire Prevention Month throughout the city, and I urge all people of Morganton to protect their homes and families by heeding the important message of Fire Prevention Month 2017, adopted this October 2nd, 2017. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, Clerk. That is a proclamation. We don't need to vote on it, and I'm going to ask Captain Campbell if he'll come forward and meet with Councilman Simmons.
Captain, thank you. Appreciate it.
Your organization is probably not appreciated until we need you. Then we make up for it.
Captain Campbell?
I just want to take a moment. Thank you to City Council, thank you to our City Manager, thanks to each of you for your continued support at public safety in the Fire Services Division. We're growing, we're evolving, and we look forward to growing into the future, and we thank you for your continued support, and thank you for this proclamation for fire prevention. We want to stay out there, we want the public educated, and that's one of our main missions, is to educate the public and keep every one of our citizens safe from fire. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Cyber Security Awareness Month. Whereas we recognize the vital role that technology has in our daily lives and in the future of our nation, whereby today many citizens, schools, libraries, businesses, municipalities, and other organizations use the Internet for a variety of tasks, including keeping in contact with family and friends, managing personal finances, performing research, enhancing education and conducting business, and whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, and whereas the use of the Internet at schools in the City of Morganton enhances the education of youth by providing them access to online educational and research materials, and at institutions of higher education, the use of information technology is integral to teaching and learning, research, and outreach, and service, and whereas Internet users and our information infrastructure face this increasing threat of malicious cyber attack, significant financial and personal privacy losses due to identity theft and fraud, and whereas the Stop, Think, Connect Campaign is a national effort coordinated by a coalition of private group companies, nonprofits, and government organizations to raise awareness among cybersecurity among all digital citizens, helping them to stay safer and more secure online. Now therefore, our Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the City of Morganton, to hereby proclaim the month of October as Cyber Security Awareness Month, and encourage citizens to learn about cybersecurity and put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and business. Adopted this second day of October 2017, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, Clerk. This is a recognition of Cyber Security Awareness Month. I'll ask Councilman Forrest Fleming, if he'll meet Greg at the podium to accept this proclamation, please.
Greg, in this world of increasing technology, cybersecurity certainly is becoming more important every day, and we recognize this, and we are happy to present you with this.
Thank you. Just want to just make a few comments on the Cyber Security Awareness Month, because everybody is connected with computers, and I know just recently in the paper, everybody's seen the Equifax security breach. So if you're connected with a computer on the Internet and you can access it 24/7, the bad guys can too. So there's a campaign each October, there's a website that's staysafeonline.org. I encourage you to go there, look up the information, and familiarize yourself with what's out there, what's taking place, what can happen, and how you can protect yourself. We'll get with... Get some of this stuff on our website during the month of October, and hopefully some of the material will help you in the future and help you protect yourself as much as possible, because the bad guys are out there and they're constantly trying to get your information, get your money, and so we want to try to help you protect yourself against those situations. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Next on the agenda is an announcement about the North Carolina Hall of Fame induction on October 19th. The North Carolina Music Hall of Fame has announced this year seven inductees. Inductions are held annually as the Hall of Fame's highlight event of the year to commemorate the music legacy of North Carolina's greatest music makers. The inductees this year include Morganton's Etta Baker, the legendary Piedmont blues guitarist and singer. She received the North Carolina Folk Heritage Award, National Heritage Fellowship, National Endormments of the Arts, and the North Carolina Award. Chat will be presented on October 19th, so our congratulations to the Baker family. Thank you. Upcoming events, it looks like Kama is going to be extremely busy. Terry Clark will be there on October the 7th at 7:30. Ram Cor will be there October the 14th at 7:30. Flip Fabrique, is that the right, Jim? Fabrique will be October the 21st at 7:30, and Big Bad Voodoo Daddy will be there November the 2nd at 7:30. So, Jim, you'll have a full house. Saturday night's performance was great. I think it was just a packed house, and everybody left really pleased with Saturday's performance, so thank you so much. Farmers Market are Saturdays behind the Old Depot and Wednesdays on North Green Street. Down on Catawba Meadows, Fall Plow Day will be October 7th and 8th at Catawba Meadows Park. The Tour de Art will be Thursday, October 19th. The Community House Grand Reopening is Sunday, October 22nd, from 2:00 to 4:00. The public is invited to that grand reopening on October 22nd. The NC3C Conference is going to be October the 26th at the Community House, and then Sharon and her group downtown have got things planned, starting with the Downtown Ghost Tours October 21st and 22nd, and October 27th and 28th. Call the Main Street Office for more information about the Downtown Ghost Tours. There'll be Spooky Meadows Hay Ride, October 27th through the 28th at Catawba Meadows Park. The Oyster and Shrimp Festival by the Burke Arts Council will be October the 28th at the Old Courthouse Square, and the Halloween Spooktacular is October 31st from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock throughout downtown. I understand there's some very special activities planned between 3:00 and 6:00 at the Halloween Spooktacular. I'd also like to mention that we have an election in Morganton and Burke County. Voting will start, early voting will start Thursday, October 19th. It'll go from 8:00 to 5:00, and it will go through October the 19th through Saturday, November 4th will be early voting. Saturday, November 4th, the polls will be open from 8:00 to 1:00. There are five voting places in Burke County, the Burke County Board of Elections, the Burke County Senior Citizen Center, Rutherford College Town Hall, Hill to Bran Methodist Church, and Glen Alpen Town Hall in Glen Alpen. So that will be, and election will be on November 7.
7.
Okay. I think that's all public advocacy, Sally, I think.
A lot, isn't it?
Next on the agenda, North Carolina Municipal Power Agency. Sally?
Yes, we have an election coming up in November to the Electricities Board of Directors. There are two seats available for the Western Power Agency, the one that we are a part of, NCMPA-1. We are asking to nominate and to support Dan Brown, the retired electric director for the City of Morganton, for reelection to that board in the majority vote seat. Dan has served the past three years, has done an excellent job, and is eligible for reelection to that board. Would like your permission to support Dan and to ask the other Electricities in the Western Agency to support him also.
What is the wish of council?
A move we nominate Dan Brown as a nominee for election to the Electricities Board of Directors in the NCMPA-1 Majority Vote Seat.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Sally, I believe there are five items.
There are five individual items. Would ask that you would consider those in one motion, unless there's something on there that you would like removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from the September 11th council meeting. It includes the regulatory requirement to appoint Jenny McNeely, to reappoint her as the deputy tax collector, and to actually adopt a resolution ordering her to collect taxes, although we've been doing that since July 1. But now is the time of year that we are asked to do that under state statute. Would also consider a budget amendment, which is allowing us to replay $10,000 in private donations received for the Community House renovation, and to restore those back in our capital reserve fund. Also, to allow us to issue a contract with a not-to-exceed $55,000 amount to S, M, and E. This is for some special inspection and construction materials testing associated with our large conversion process going on at the wastewater treatment plant. That's a part of the larger project. We have found a way that we're going to recognize about $20,000 worth of savings by doing this contract separately from the larger project. And then finally, some more tweaking and a few more adjustments to the pay ranges that were recommended back to you in June during our pay and classification study process. Doesn't change any dollar amounts, it's just cleaning up some of the pay ranges.
Do any members have, wish to have anything deleted from the consent agenda? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now for our new business, I think our first item of new business is consideration of a building reuse grant with Continental Automotive Systems. Sally?
It is, and this is an item that we have discussed before. As a matter of fact, back in the spring, you adopted an economic development incentive grant in agreement with Continental that both the city and the county... grant in agreement with Continental that both the city and the county are parties to with Continental. This is the formal acceptance, now that the state has approved this, of the $1 million in the building reuse grant. But most importantly, it is to approve the contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments, who will be administering that grant for us. And that's a contract for $25,000, and that is something that Morganton and Burke County will share in those costs. Would ask that you accept the grant and then approve the contract with the COG, and the budget amendments are included in here to set up the $25,000 and to receive half of the money from Burke County.
So we need two motions. I'll entertain the first motion, please.
A move to accept the building reuse grant and approve the project budget ordinance for $1 million.
To have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Move to approve the contract Western Piedmont, Western Piedmont Council of Government to administrate the Continental Building Reuse Grant for $25,000 and a budget amendment to receive half the administrative cost from Burke County.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
I will say that Continental's expansion project is well underway. They are having their expansion and 25th anniversary celebration on October 17th. So looking forward to that, looking forward to this expansion, and an opportunity for them to hire at least 160 new employees, and to invest over $45 million in new equipment and a building expansion.
Great, great news. Next is a licensing agreement with Carolina West Wireless. Sally?
Thank you. Yes, you will recall that a few years ago, we approved an agreement with Verizon for location of their telecommunications antennas on our water tank here outside the front entrance of City Hall, the Landmark Water Tank, as we like to call it. And Carolina West Wireless has now approached us about a similar arrangement. There is adequate room on the tank for that, and they would also put three antenna on the rim of the tank, together with the related equipment, similar terms, very similar terms to what we had agreed with Verizon. This would be a license agreement for a period of 10 years, with the possibility of a five-year renewal term. They would make a payment of $10,000 upfront, just like Verizon did, and $2,000 a month in license fees.
Thank you.
And again, this would be non-exclusive. I don't know if there's room on the tank for more than Verizon and Carolina West, but if there is, then we would still be able to do that.
Great. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve a license agreement with Carolina West Wireless Incorporated for an initial term of 10 years for location and operation of telecommunications antennas and related equipment on the Landmark Water Tank just out the main, outside the main entrance of City Hall.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
And I would like to say that you don't have any corresponding budget amendments tonight, because there is a permitting process and a review process of their plans for doing this. We're not sure when this might happen. When all that gets done and it actually goes on the tank, then we will present a budget amendment to you, recognizing whatever month in this fiscal year that happens.
Great. Next is the consideration of grant awards of entitlement funds to nonprofits. Sally?
You know that every year in our CDBG entitlement fund, one of our action items and one of our commitments is to considering loans, I mean, I'm sorry, not loans, grants to some of our nonprofits. Very popular part of that program and the way in which we use those dollars. We have Lisa Helton here with us tonight. We have a review process for this, and she is here to let you know who the recipients will be this year.
Good evening. Good to see everyone. As part of the 2017 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, $21,980 was set aside for the nonprofit program. We received six applications, and we were able to fund three of those. The Outreach Center will receive $8,500 options, will receive $5,500, and the House of Refuge will receive $7,980.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I will also remind you that we accept applications, they're graded and scored based on some criteria, and we also have the rule in place that you can't receive an award, a grant award, more than two years in a row, so that we have the opportunity to spread this around. And then after you've sat out a year, you have the ability to come back in and reapply.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award official year 2017 entitlement funds to nonprofits as recommended.
I have a motion to have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a 30-day notice for vacancies on boards and commission. On the Historic Preservation Committee, we have expiring terms of David Stevenson, Ken Volts, and Mark Barrier. These positions will be filled at the next city council, and so if you wish to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission, please see Kelly Russell at City Hall and get an application. Next on the agenda is an appointment to the Cable Television Commission. Counsel, I believe this was passed out. We didn't have the application when the books were put together, but it was passed out at your desk. Harrison Segal, who lives at 101 Woodland Drive and is a student at Patton High School. We have that student position open on the Cable Television Committee for a high school student or a student representative. Do we have any other nominations? Not to have a motion to accept Harrison Segal as the appointed for the Cable Television Commission for one school year.
Slow move.
To have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
And may I also tell you that we have a vacancy on this board too, due to the passing of one of its members. So we can go ahead and give a 30-day notice for that, and hopefully have a suggestion for next time.
Next on the agenda, the last thing on, at least in open session, is consideration of a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina DOT for grant administrator. That was a handout, I think, that the city manager placed on your position. I'll ask Louis to, are you doing this one?
I'll do it. Either one of us can. We live it every day. So as you are all aware, we have received an ARC, an Appalachian Regional Commission grant, for $1,374,714. And that is for the purpose of constructing a connector road between South Sterling Street and West Parker Road near I-40 at exit 105. And this is a project that is very important in order for, as you have read and seen, that there's a possibility of a hotel development on that property. And getting this road project underway is very critical to that. Because this is federal money, it is flowing through the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The North Carolina Department of Transportation will be administering this. Because of that, we have to approve a memorandum of agreement, an MOA, as they call it, between the city and DOT. And we can't do anything on the project until that agreement happens. We were told today that DOT is going to consider that at their October board meeting. Prior to today, we had been told that would be in November. So we are asking, and we have a basic form of that, and it pretty much spells out everything the way that it has to be. We are asking, in order to not hold this up for another month, that you would consider allowing the mayor and myself to execute these agreements on behalf of the city, once the Department of Transportation Board has approved it.
So Sally, this is from ARC for an MOA for DOT, is that right?
That would be correct. A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
M-O-U-S-E, okay.
P-D-Q, you know.
Absolutely.
A-S-A-P.
You got that right.
I'll entertain a motion?
I move we allow the mayor and city manager to execute and issue these agreements on behalf of the city, together with additional authorities, to make such alterations, technical amendments, and changes as may be necessary to implement the memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for administrative of an ARC grant in the amount of $1,374,714.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A4, to discuss matters to location or expansion of industry, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A-3, to consult with the city's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. I so move to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. We will now go into closed session.
And we will come out and adjourn the meeting, but for the press and folks, we do not expect any action at the end of the closed session.